Yonzo, ayodun na tse kudan nja, no no yolu ilin du nu ti ko xong opa ko chua. Ku ya bo li ba, yonzo xetod zayt ony tse kudan nja, mon yo thong prakha se jo ti la xesosu yonzo nda, mon tuin siri nu yonzo ho ndong sen po sen mina sota. Boto de pinpoto yonzo lu sen mina sota no, ton to ne yonzo xong le, ya tu jon sai, le ke kutsa krenje te la kopeng su mu de keng go le le. So su yonzo ku jao pinmu xe, Tony her yonzo la xi tu wei tu siri council. Yonzo nda, sha it sen po, yonzo wo jo, yonzo yonzo xong yonzo ton de no hati yonzo yonzo. No no yonzo ta no no la ta shua ha de, ni yonzo pe su la xi tu wa tu siri council yonzo yonzo. Ku jao pinmu xe de, ke xi tu yonzo ne, ni lu pe su te, ni kha pe yonzo yonzo.
So with that being said, my name is Victor Mongma Lee, I'm your emcee tonight. I have the privilege of knowing Tony for a very long time, six or more years. We worked on Senator Farmherz campaign together. And I also know him many years back when he was doing his Kung Fu Jiu Jitsu stuff in the community. So he's a great guy. But I know him from another side, I know that he's very passionate, he's very outgoing, he's always there when you need him. And that's the reason why I believe that he will be a great city council member of representing Eastside St. Paul or Six. Even though he's new to politics, he's very serious. He understands the responsibility for running for the city office. But most importantly, what he wants to do is engage with as many people as possible. Because he knows that it's not about him, it's about his community, it's about Eastside St. Paul. Okay, Eastside's very diverse, we have a lot of small businesses such as Pizza Ribs tonight. We also have a lot of residents, senior citizens that needs attention. And I believe he will be a great individual, he will need your support. In the end, at the end of the day, Tony is about helping people, he's about understanding people. Most importantly, he's about addressing the needs of the people of Eastside St. Paul. And with that, he's gonna need your support. But before we begin and have him come up here, I'm gonna have a few members of the community come up. And the first member that I would like to have come up here is Ashley Wondrick, a long time Eastside St. Paul and coworker of Tony's called Ashley.
Hello, I'm Ashley Wondrick, I've been working with Tony for six years. Tony is just an all-around great guy. He's the kind of person who will always have your back, he's reliable and thinks about what's best for everyone, not just himself. And then the stay in age is kind of a rare trait, so it's really, we're really lucky to have him at Gordon Parks. As some of you may know, it's not the easiest thing in the world to work with teenagers. And you have to have a big heart and a lot of patience, and Tony has both, coupled with a strong sense of community and moral compass always pointed in the right direction. This makes him a great role model for the students, many of whom don't have a strong role model in their lives. And it also makes him a great person to have around where you're trying to make community connections as he's down to earth and really understands where, tries to understand where everyone is coming from. For these reasons and so many more that I can't even say, I am endorsing Tony Hurd for our city council rep.
Thank you Ashley for those wonderful words. We have a long time residence of Eastside St. Paul for twenty plus years. Mr. Gary Unger, please welcome Mr. Gary Unger.
It's a few more years than that, probably as long in the tooth as I am. I'm a lifelong Eastsider, and I've seen this Eastside grow and mature. But it started down the street down there, in what they call Sweet Hollow. It was a refuge for people to come and get together and live. And as they started to prosper and work for the railroads and work for the 3M's and the Hams and the everything, they walked out of that and different nationalities seemed to come in and take over. We are really the melting pot of St. Paul. We are definitely the melting pot, if you look up the street, there's Gustavus Adolphus Church, there's Arlington Hills, the Norwegians and the Swedes. And they came from Sweet Hollow and they came out and started establishing a family center here. Where Maryland Avenue, that was a cutoff folks. You didn't drink alcohol on that side of Payne Avenue on Maryland. You drank it on this side, on the south side, you went home to your families on the north side. So it started to grow. And St. Casimir's Catholic church was the Polish. The Irish were over at St. John's church. Sacred Heart was the German church. And things just started to grow, but we all got together, and I think that's a theme of the Eastside. We are all one family, and if you ask me, we're the best kept secret in St. Paul. We are stubborn Eastsiders that work hard and prosper and work to get ourselves a better life. In that tune when you think about it, you know. Payne Avenue didn't have a lot of parking yet, didn't need it, because people walked to work. They walked to Whirlpool, they walked to 3M, they walked to Hams. Whirlpool was Seagulls at the time. I think I knocked this out, I don't know what I did, but anyhow I did it. But it was a community where we worked, we played, and we prospered all in one place. And I think that's a theme that we gotta look at today as our changing demographics. We're getting a large population of Hispanics, of Afro-American people in. And they says, "Who are these people? We didn't know you." You know, and that's not right. And they said, "We should get to know these people, because it's not them and us. It's gotta be we, all of us together, working together." And that's what it's gotta be. So we started a Mung Outreach program at District Two. Today we have eighty-five community gardens, we've had Mung to English classes, we're giving Spanish to English classes today. And we're trying to grow and know our assets, because you're not them. You're us and you are an asset of ours, we grow together. What happens to you happens to us, happens to all of us. Very important. And that's why it's important that Tony is putting himself up. He's been here, he's starting to learn what the ropes are, where things happen. He works in the schools. One of the people that work in our schools have to be commendable. They are working with our future. What they give to our kids is stuff nobody can take away from them once they learn it. I asked a kid once what two and two was, he snapped off four right away. I said, "Where'd you learn that?" He says, "At school." I says, "Can I take it away from you?" No, that's his forever, that's what they learn at school. And Tony's there working with us, he's on the front lines of helping our futures. And Tony wants to be our future City Hall, and that's what... And I guess I've done something, I put my name in to be the interim City Councilman. Which I am proud to do, I am very proud of the Eastside. I'm very proud of the city of St. Paul. I even have a T-shirt that says, "St. Paul is mentioned in the Bible, doesn't say a word about Minneapolis." So folks, I've taken a look at Tony, he appears to be the candidate that'll work for all of us. It's not a one nation, one nationality, one anything, it's gotta be us. It's gotta be us that's been that melting pot. Of the Germans up at Sacred Heart, and the Catholics at St. John's, at the Polish, at St. Casimir's, at the Swedes and the Norwegians, at Gustavus Adolphus and Arlington Hills. And now it goes on to the new generations that are filling in our neighborhood and giving us the pride we need, and I think Tony will do that for us.
I wanna start by introducing myself, my name is Melinda Quintanilla. I have known and worked with candidate Tony Hurd. I've done this for approximately twenty-seven plus years. During this time, I've known Tony to be a person who displays the following qualities. Tony displays humanity and is committed to all people, all ages, all colors of persons, including women, without biased judgment. You can see that in his panel which he chooses to represent him today. Tony is actively involved in many things outside of work, showing his commitment and adaptability to people and projects as well as to continue to improve himself as an educated person of the community. Tony is a leader amongst his community and is well-respected by everyone. Tony is very committed to his work ethic, when he is asked to do work on projects, he goes above and beyond what is asked of him. There's not anything that he lets stand in his way of completing his projects. For these reasons, Tony Hurd is the right candidate for this position. Good luck to you Tony Hurd, my coworker, my friend, and my candidate of choice for the people.
Thank you. Alright, our next guest speaker. Talking about leadership, I believe this man taught Tony everything he knows, so please welcome Dr. Si Long Ya.
Thank you, thank you. I'm honored to be here tonight. And I spent my life, living in a political life for the past fifty-nine years. I know Tony for thirty-eight years. It means that he lived a life, a political life for thirty-eight years with me. And he is a novice to the politics, a local politics. My entire life is global politics, comparative politics, communism, Soviet Union, USA, and democracy, this is my terminology that I know a lot. Local politics like today, like Tony run for the city council, someone else, like say Rep, whatever. It's local, local to me, and I had to learn the local terminology the past several years. And Tony is a good friend of mine, he's also a trustworthy friend and a leader. So like I mentioned earlier, he's not a novice to politics, he's a long-term politician, but not to the mainstream. In the Mung community, he's quite a, being a leader in the Mung community the past several years. Thank you, thank you. So, even though we are imminent, but we have to live, we have to be a good city council member. Judging from what we've lived together the past thirty-eight years, he's a trustworthy, he's a community leader, he's a martial master, he's a council, district council member, whatever. And he's a board, school board member, he's a Mung ancient council member, all members, members, and members. It means that now he's ready to move forward to a city council member. And, not least, but Tony is, we call the second generation American. He'll bring the rich culture of the Mung community to the mainstream city of St. Paul. Unfortunately, I live in Minneapolis, I do business in St. Paul. So I, my trust, my help is from the city of St. Paul. And several friends that are long, "Why don't you move to St. Paul?" I said, "Yes, I will," because my business in Eastside St. Paul, in his district, yeah, his district. The White Dragon Hall, my business is White Dragon Hall. And my mind, I want to help the White Dragon Hall to be part of your campaign. Yeah, from now on, yeah, the Pizra here and also White Dragon will be a partnership to sponsor your event from now on. When you get elected to the city council, so, you can use our hall as part of your event. And I call to the community, the Mung community, the American community, every community in the Eastside, that we need to join together, everything is politics here, politics not just city council. Like I mentioned earlier, the grassroots community, we need to work together, we need to work together as part of the greater American. Now, we don't talk about bipolar politics, we have about unipolar politics. We, our Americans, the only superpower in the world. We are the only power in the world. So we need to be tough, we need to be tough, not at President Trump's office, but we need to be tough at city council of St. Paul, we need to be tough at Eastside St. Paul, we need to be tough. Yeah, we need to be tough, we need to be, what do you call the political term is that we need to be absolute, not absolute power, but need to be the best. Yeah, because we live in a multicultural, it's now time for us to diversify our city council. It's about time for us to live in a, when I go to the nonprofit organization, I said, "We live in a small United Nations." I went to Geneva several times, and you see the flag, you see the people there, and you live as a United Nations. Now St. Paul is part of the small United Nations, you count by the ratio, but anti-city. Yeah, we are part of that, so we need to make our city a model, a model for the other larger cities in the United States. So I hope that Mr. Tony will be part of the development for our diversified poor in the city of St. Paul. And I strongly support Tony for the council membership, worship, section, right, yeah. I fully support that. And I call to the community that he is the one, yeah, he is the one, he is the one, really is the one. Thank you.
And I wonder about his platform, I also wondering about his vision and his vision. But then I realized, I didn't have to think too hard, I didn't have to be prepared, because it's so easy to see and understand the reason why Mungco Tony is the best candidate for this position. I remember growing up, my uncle is always out there, not only helping my family, our family, community, our plants, but the community as well. For example, when my father passed away, as a young girl, which is twenty years ago, my world fell apart. But because of great leaders like Tony, made it easier to go through the ordeal. Tony is a great role model, a great teacher, and a great leader. Tony has a big heart, he's never greedy of his time, which makes him a constant supporter. Tony continues to support everyone and is ready to help anyone he could. He has a serving heart, and if you have any concern at all, I believe he will listen and he will help you, he'll be more than happy to help you. City council is only an entry door for him to extend his leadership, problem-solving skills, and knowledge to help our community better. And I could not think of anyone who is better to be a city council than Tony, thank you.
Running for city council or being a council member is probably one of the toughest jobs to have, but you'll love it. Okay, because you know why, you will serve the community, and that's what you've done for so long. So ladies and gentlemen, the man of the hour, please welcome Tony Hurd.
How are you guys doing? Good afternoon, my citizen on the east side of St. Paul in Wall Street. Welcome to Eastside Pizza area. My name's Tony Hurd, thank you for you joining me tonight as I announce my candidacy for city council here on the east side of Wall Street. It's my goal to build the world left by my predecessor. I came to this country when I was fourteen years old. After the war, I have faced many difficulties and challenges in my life. I lived in the east side of St. Paul for over twenty years. And I have been active community member throughout Wall Street. I love diverse neighborhood where my wife and I bought a house at Frank Street and Jureenian Avenue. I celebrate, respect the diversity of Eastside and pledge to work on everyone's behalf. A few points about my professional background. I worked as a park ranger for the city of St. Paul from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two. And as our educational assistant for St. Paul Public School from nineteen ninety-four to the present. Most students at Harding High School in Gordon Park know me as Mr. Hurd. Working in St. Paul Public School have been privileged and given me a unit insight into the ever Wall Street family and business. As a park ranger, I gained hands on knowledge of the public safety need of those. Same family, I also proud member of the St. Paul Federation of Teacher Unions. I also have a long history of serving my Eastside community in many capacities such as Board of Education for community, the Community School of Accident. I was a board of a director for Penne Felon District Council Five. I was the chair for precinct chair for Wall Street and precinct seat. I also volunteer instructor of martial art physical discipline and also a Mung cultural advisor. And also a representative of the ancient council of Minnesota. While council member must address all the issue of the community, I will bring special focus to. First, affordable housing. We have a serious shortage here and for many empty house and unfit to live in. We must create and pursue multiple forms of affordable housing. Second, economic develop and increase business opportunity. Wall Street must revisit and update and plan to develop available land and empty building. We have a new mayor, a new economic development team, this is an opportunity for a fresh start for Wall Street. Number three, safer street for people walking, bicycle, improved street for driver. Our street need considerable upgrade and we need review of the improved safety for people riding bike and crossing street. Number four, public safety. I will create working relationship with our first responder and emphasize public safety in socially way. Number five, racial and gender equity. We are diversity community and we must out-treat fairly and including in the opportunity and prosperity of our community. Number six, public park facility improving. As a park ranger, I believe environment sustainability and want our park and lake to be accessible, clean, and safe for everyone. Seven, community engagement. As your council member, I will hold frequent public meeting, I will have open door policy, I will see me out there in the community with you. I will get special encouraged to our newer resident, the Korean, Britani, East African, and our others. Number eight, as a parent of a child with a disability special ed, my wife and I, firsthand the challenge of those with disability. We as a city can and must do more to improve accommodation for those family. I want to be your going to person for our city matter, from the issue I mentioned before. Recycling, seeing the po hole, or repair, snowing, snow movable traffic lights, and street crossing, and I'm ready to address all this. I may not speak the best English in this race, I am bilingual, but I do know I have more experience in public serving in Wall Street. I love my Eastside community and will be honored and privileged to serve you on the St. Paul City Council of Wall Street, thank you.
What a job, thank you. Alright, but he believes in moving the city forward. He's always doing what's best for the city, believing in his people, always providing civic engagement. This man needs no introduction, he's our representative, District Sixty-Seven Senator Farmherz, please.
Thank you everybody, you have a proud restaurant tonight. You know, like cartoon, you know, when you see, when you have too many people, then the house of the restaurant expand, you know? Once you leave, then the house shrink. So tonight, we are that, so thank you everybody for coming, you know, and all the speaker and supporter of Tony Hurd, you know, and also Mr. Gary Unger, who grew up in the Eastside St. Paul and know a lot about Eastside history. You know, he reminded me like Wachowski in the Gran Torino movie. You know, at the end, we get the Gran Torino, so he gonna give the Gran Torino to Tony Hurd here. I met, I first met Tony Hurd about twenty years ago, twenty-three years ago, when I was prepared to go on a fishing trip. So I took a scout for Nightcrawler at Fane Lake. And as the sun was going down, I saw patrol car drove by and parked next to me, and I figured I must have done something wrong. But then came out. But then came out Tony Hurd in uniform, and he was kind, he was kind to introduce himself. Make sure that I'm safe, because it's getting dark. That's how we know each other, 23 years ago. As the year passed, I know that he helped a lot of people and he helped his community, unselfishly. And I can say again, unselfishly. He helped the monk community with cultural ceremonies. He helped parents and teacher to better of St. Paul students. He helped teach physical fitness and martial arts discipline to our young people. And he joined me on a number of occasion, cleaned up the lakeside of Falen, and also helped me, helped me, helped put me in office. He did more to help me in my campaign 2012. While I'm in office, he still continued to work with me in the East Side, St. Paul project by supporting my decision on the Metro, Metro State Science Project and Wonka TP Center, the China Friendship Garden, the Tulu and the Gato Field during his tenure when he served at District Five Council. He told me years ago that he'd like to run for city council. Not against Councilman Dan Bostrom, but after Councilman Dan Bostrom retired. And I didn't expect Councilman Bostrom would retire so soon. And I didn't think Tony would call me this prompt. Three days after Dan Bostrom announced his retirement, Tony called me and asked, "Would you help me?" So with this history that I just mentioned, it's only makes sense I will support Tony Hurd as our next city council for Ward Six. My fellow East Siders of all background, the essential role for a city council is to be responsive to the people in his or her wards. Passing resolution to govern our city is a necessity. But what East Side need now, what East Side need now is someone with vision. What East Side need now is a go-to person for all people, and that's Tony Hurd. He will get things done for you. Tony will be a person who you can call about potholes, call about traffic light, call about snow plowing, call about recycling, trash hauling, tree falling, neighborhood nuisance, loud noise, housing issue, business zoning, police and firefighter, and more. He's not a person that just pull his arm and tell other, or tell us what we should do, but he will get it done. That's Tony Hurd. I would not be surprised, I would not be surprised that he will answer your call after hour and even midnight and get it done for you. Like I said earlier, I know Tony for more than 20 years. As an active member of East Side resident, he's a good husband, a loving father to his children, one with developmental disability. He worked hard for his family and his community. He protect our children as a teacher assistant. He keeps our parking and public area safe. He teaches the arts of wushu, self-defense, to our youth here in the East Side. He served as a school board at the Community School of Excellence. He participated in District Five Council and served as our DFL precinct chair for precinct six. He knows almost every single street in the East Side neighborhood. There's more about Tony. I can go on, the list can go on. Like Tony said earlier, he may not be the well-articulated individual, but he's bilingual. And he have the wealth of experience, the wealth of experience that will change our city. And he will be a great, great city councilman. He will be your go-to city council person if you put him in office. So everyone, everyone, let's support Tony, let's support Tony and help him to first win the convention in May and then to the general election in November. Can we do that?
Yeah!
Yes, we can, right? How do you say it, Stan? Si se puede, all right? Si se puede. And I thank everybody. I know it's a little hard to improvise from just reading the script here, but I thank everybody, the diversity member of our community. Mr. Omar, you bring Somali community over to support us and the people standing in background here. Tony is a very genuine individual, as I already stated much earlier. And I want us to do our best, I want us to do our best to take Tony to a convention and win the convention in May, so that we can go on to the general in November. Can we all do that?
Yes, we can!
Okay. So thank you very much, thank you very much. My speech wasn't much, no wrong, but thank you very much for being here. And let's work together to get Tony Hurd elected to the city council of Ward Six. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Senator closing the event. But please continue to support Tony. He's not only bilingual, but he's our go-to guy. So thank you and have a good night. Thank you.